Welcome to the Bothell City Council Regular Meeting of June 21, 2016. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, attendance is going to be interesting. So I'll see, councilmembers McNeil, Agnew, myself, and Deputy Mayor here. Councilmember Spivey is absent and excused. Councilmember Sandwich is absent and excused, and we expect Josh to be here shortly, or Councilmember Freed, sorry, to be here shortly. So we'll start off with a council, or I'm sorry, a special presentation from Snohomish County Tourism Bureau. Welcome.
Thank you, and thank you so much for this opportunity. I'm Amy Spain. I'm the Executive Director of the Snohomish County Tourism Bureau and here to give an annual report on the work of the Tourism Bureau in 2015. You've got a very busy agenda, so I'm going to try to go through the slides really quickly, so excuse me if I'm racing ahead. I'm, of course, happy to answer any questions you have tonight or because of your full agenda. Of course, I'm available. I work closely with Peter and Barbara Ramey on your staff, and they can also filter questions to me should that arise. So I'll just get started. I'd like to begin to just remind you that tourism is economic development. In 2015, the visitor spending in Washington State was almost $21 billion, and that accounted for over $1 billion in local and state tax revenues, taxes that you and I as residents of the state don't have to pay. As well, we employ over 170,000 people statewide directly in visitor-related businesses. So tourism is, as from this slide you can see, travelers come in through a variety of mechanisms, and that middle portion of that dollar sign is where they spend their money. They're here for meetings and events, they go to restaurants, they shop in your stores, attend events or at performing arts centers, at museums, et cetera. And from that spend, we are able to employ people. Those wages stay in our communities, and the tax dollars that are generated help to provide for the infrastructure that we enjoy as residents. We do not have a state tourism office in Washington State. We're the only state in the country without a statewide tourism organization, and I am not here tonight to speak to that. Perhaps I can get back on your agenda in the fall or first part of the spring as we begin to begin our process in lobbying for state tourism funding from the state legislature. But very briefly, this is the David and Goliath situation we find ourselves within. And actually, that is the 2013 to 2015 total budget for Washington's Tourism Alliance. We actually have $0 currently, so no money was provided in the state legislature this year as an interim fund. This is a snapshot of the people who come to Washington State. So on average, 2.2 people, they stay two and a half nights, and they spend $477 per travel party per day. In Snohomish County, it's a little bit less than that, 2.1 people, staying 2.1 nights, and spend roughly $360 per travel party per day. The Snohomish County Tourism Bureau focuses on people who are coming from far enough away that they're going to stay overnight. Day travelers are very important to every community, and your festival and event directors probably don't much care where those people are coming from unless they're getting lodging tax money to help fund their event, and then they care about those heads and beds. But this slide dramatically shows why we are focused on that. The overnight traveler is spending more money in our community, so it has a greater economic impact. And in 2015, there was over $1 billion, visitor spend of over $1 billion in Snohomish County. You see the breakdown of where that dollar is spent, and that accommodations is third on the list. And so although overnight travelers, people might think, "Well, it's only the hotels that are going to gain from that." Actually, restaurants and transportation sectors and retail is a very close fourth behind accommodations. That's where the visitors are spending their dollars. So tourism really does have a very wide swipe of economic development. In Snohomish County, there are over 10,000 people directly employed by tourism businesses, and that visitor spend in Snohomish County leaves $21.1 million in our county coffers. Again, that's money that you and I don't have to contribute. So this is a brief overview of what I'll be addressing tonight. Our efforts generated over 4,500 requests for information. We saw an increase to our website visitation by about 3%. We achieved roughly $300,000 of free media coverage from our public relations efforts. I'll speak more specifically about our group business, but we generated over $44 million of economic impact from our direct sales efforts. The visitor centers around Snohomish County saw over 38,000 visitors from the ones that we manage, 107,000 countywide. The occupancy, ADR is Average Daily Rate, and RevPAR, which is Revenue Per Available Room, are measurements within the hotel community. And you'll see that the occupancy levels were actually down in 2015, primarily fourth quarter and primarily due to the decrease in the Canadian traveler. As the Canadian dollar weakened to the US dollar, we saw an immediate impact of those Canadian travelers who come down and stay overnight and spend money in our communities. However, the hotel motel tax collections were up almost 13% in 2015, so that was a pretty strong number. So the next several slides are going to be about our group sales efforts, and we work towards bringing conventions, sporting events, bus tours, weddings, reunions, all kinds of folks into our community. And our advertising helps to support that brand of Snohomish County being a meeting and event destination. Our sales staff is active, going out to 22 trade shows in 2015. At those trade shows, for the most part, we are meeting one-on-one with event planners, and we share those leads with the hotels and meeting and event venues when we come back to Snohomish County. Additionally, we distributed over 38 pieces of information. So our Pack to Travel Guide goes to the group tour operators, our Meetings and Events Guide goes to the convention planners or military reunion planners, as well as other pieces of collateral materials to help bring people into the county. This is a list of the trade shows that we attend, and not to go through that list other than to note the various segments. So again, package travel would be your bus tours, quite a lot in the sports marketing, consumer travel, and the meetings and events. We also go on sales missions, so we schedule one-on-one appointments, desk-side appointments with meeting and event planners in our key feeder cities, and we do invite members of the community to join us on those sales missions as well. We also bring folks into our community. They're called familiarization tours. So we work with event planners, travel writers, travel editors, package travel providers, and we bring them into the county and show them those meeting venues or those sporting venues, the attractions, so that they can package Snohomish County as part of their overall itinerary. And we brought in 18 such groups. So this is really where the rubber meets the road when it comes to our group sales efforts. The yellow column is the combined tentative indefinite, so it's a snapshot of where we were as of December 31, 2015. So at that time, we had a combined total of 22,000 definite room nights, over 9,000 tentative room nights at that year-end, totaling 31,000 total room nights, and that's total hotel room nights. The economic impact in 2015 was very close to 2014. You see a rather dramatic jump from 2000, pre-2014, and that was due to the support of the Tourism Promotion Area Fund at the county whereby we were able to add a sales staff member. So we saw that immediate impact from having the additional sales efforts. Our sports department generates quite a lot of economic impact, and these are just a few of the events that we were able to bring in. They are sometimes regional or statewide, as well as international events that bring publicity to our county as a sporting destination. We're very proud of our staff, and Tammy Dunn, who's shown in that slide, won a couple of awards in 2015. As a destination, we were named by Sports Events Magazine as the Reader's Choice Award. Tammy individually won the National Association of Sports Commission's Game Changer Award and was the inaugural recipient of an award known as the Women in Sports Tourism. So those were much to the work of our staff. And then finally, we received an award from Champions of Economic Impact in Sports Tournament because of an event that was held that brought in over $4 million of economic impact in the county. So moving from our group sales efforts to the leisure travel, we have advertising, and you can see the branding, consistent branding in some of those ads and a list of some of the publications that we advertise in. Again, those are our feeder cities, as well as the demographics of the traveler that we know through our research is most likely to travel to Snohomish County. We are moving more and more to an online presence, as is pretty common. Most of our print, most if not all of our print publications also have an online version where our ads are placed, but we also have banner ads and targeted advertising just for the online aspects. We're very busy pushing information out to our community as well. We have four electronic newsletters to different market segments, Visitors, our Sports Quarterly, our Visitor Information Center Newsletter, as well as Tourism Today, which is an industry newsletter going to folks within the tourism industry here in Snohomish County. Our website visitation was up 3% over the previous year, and we have a couple of websites. Snohomish.org is our primary tourism website, and SnohomishCountyWeddings.com, as the name implies, is specific to that market segment, so we've got referrals to wedding venues, tuxedo rental, limousine rental, caterers, all that kind of thing, so it's a very specialized segment. And then our Stay Shop &amp; Save program was formerly known as Rooms at Par, so we have both of those active that feed into a discount lodging program during the off-season. We developed a couple of new pieces of collateral material in 2015, and I've put samples of those in your packets that you have before you. In addition to our visitor guide, we have a spring/summer version and a fall/winter version. Both of those are very similar, other than the calendar of events information, and we contract with travel writers to write about things to do in our communities during those seasonal times of year. As part of our media relations, we have a bimonthly newsletter that goes out to about 1,400 travel writers and publications around the country and internationally, giving them ideas to write stories about Snohomish County, because we know that the editorial support is more believable to a writer than, or to a reader, rather, than an advertisement, and so we look to have that support as well. We send out press releases on openings of new hotels or updates to museums, new exhibits, those kinds of things. We pitch story ideas directly to those travel writers, and as a result, we were able to track 56 articles written, roughly $300,000 of free media coverage. We're very active in social media, have five different Facebook pages for different market segments, Twitter, Pinterest, Instagram. I think we've got about 40-something boards on Pinterest, including LinkedIn as well. We have 18 videos on YouTube, and there are some sheets in your packets as well that list all of the YouTube videos, our social media sites, and just a cover shot of each of the publications that we provide to help market Snohomish County. We aired three television ads in 2015 focusing on our aviation attractions, outdoor recreation, and finally, shopping in the winter months. Our Visitor Services Program is implementing some of the strategies of the county-wide Strategic Tourism Plan, including traditional advertising in Elderwood Mall, which is that top photo in just an ad kiosk, and what they call ambient advertising at Everett Mall, where we've got some branding on a couple of Adirondack chairs and a stack of our visitor guides to entice people to have a seat and learn more about the county, hopefully extending their stay or encouraging them to come back for an additional stay. We also have electronic kiosks where the people are. So we've got one at the Future of Flight and Boeing Tour. We have a kiosk at the Loomwood Convention Center and a kiosk at Toledo Resort in their lobby. So those kiosks are for people who are already here in our community. They're not going to drive overnight stays, but we're hoping to provide information real time where they can get out and explore our community or learn more about Snohomish County so they come back for another visit. We take our Visitor Information Center on the road and operate at festivals and events each year, and those festivals change each year so that we try to get around to as much of the county as we can over the course of a couple of years. This is a snapshot of who comes to those brick-and-mortar visitor information centers. Roughly 75% come from more than 50 miles away, and that's what is the determination of a bona fide visitor, that they've come from far enough away that they're likely to stay overnight. And about 25% come from the local communities, and we include King and Skagit County in that local community. And that's okay, because those folks are coming to our visitor information centers because they've got friends and family coming in from out of town, and we would rather they keep them in the county than take them elsewhere. As part of our program, we provide education to hotels, attractions, and communities around the county, and held three tourism-related programs in 2015. As part of our effort to educate the frontline staff of tourism businesses, we have a monthly hot sheet that lists festivals and events throughout the county and links to our website to learn more about that. It's designed in a way that can be printed off and given to the visitor as an example at a hotel front desk. We also arrange tours of area attractions for that frontline staff at no charge so that they can come and experience, whether it's the Boeing Tour or going into a museum so that they can learn firsthand and can share with that with visitors rather than just handing over a brochure. So that's all part of our industry education program. So as I said, I sped very quickly, as a brief review, things were good in 2015. Other than our occupancy dipping in fourth quarter of 2015, we saw strong numbers in our average rate at our hotels, and our hotel motel tax collections were up. Our economic impact from our group business was up. Public relations, media coverage was about 8% up over the previous year, and great visitation to our website as well. So I'll close just reminding you that tourism is economic development, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Great, thank you very much. Excuse me, thank you very much for coming. I have a quick question. I think you guys have come twice since I've been here for four and a half years. Does King County have a similar operation as Snohomish County?
Yes, Visit Seattle is the name of their Destination Marketing Organization, DMO, Destination Marketing Organization, is sort of that catch-all phrase for tourism bureaus, convention and visitor bureaus. And so Visit Seattle is, they're a membership-based organization, but they do have members throughout King County, so that would be the equivalent there.
Okay, great. Well, thank you for coming. Is there any questions from council? No?
All right, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you for your time. So next on our agenda is the review of upcoming public engagement opportunities. How we doing, City Clerk? Do you want me to come back to it? Not happening today. Okay, we can skip it, that's okay. Do you want to read, do you have a mic over there? Would you be willing to read it? Okay.
I don't know why it's not showing, but on June 23 at 7:30 a.m., we have the Safe Streets and Sidewalks ballot measure presentation in the Bothell Chamber of Commerce and Northshore Senior Center at 10212 East Riverside Drive. We have a special council meeting in lieu of the July 5 meeting, and that's next Tuesday, June 28 at 6:00 p.m. in the council chambers here, City Hall. Community meeting for the master plan for East Norway Hill Park on June 29 at 7:00 p.m. at East Norway Hill Park at 15101, 124th Avenue Northeast. Fourth of July, we have a pancake breakfast, 8:30 to 10:30 a.m. at the Downtown Firehouse. And on Fourth of July also, we have the parade, beginning with the children's parade at 11:15 a.m. and the grand parade at 12:00 p.m.
Great, thank you. So meeting agenda approval, I have one thing I would like to pull from the agenda, and that is AB 16-106, which is a consent approval of ordinance adopting updated city of Bothell Park impact fee program. And I want to pull it because we have not received an agenda packet and it wasn't put out to the public as well, so we need an additional week. Is that okay with the staff?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, great. Is there any other changes to tonight's agenda? No? Seeing none, okay. How about the projected agenda? All right, you guys are easy. Okay, so seeing nothing has been changed for tonight's agenda, we have the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Moved by Councilmember Agnew, seconded by Councilmember McNeil. Go ahead and place your vote when the voting buttons are ready. We're still working out the new City Hall glitches here, so hang in there. It's not showing, just audible. Okay, all those in favor of passing the consent agenda, raise your hand and say aye. Aye, opposed, passes unanimously. Now we're into the visitor section, and I'm just going to read out of the protocol manual real quick. Each person addressing the council will give his or her name in an audible tone of voice for the record, and unless the council grants further time, shall limit the address to three minutes. All remarks will be addressed to the council as a body and not any member thereof. No person other than the council and the person having the floor will be permitted to enter into any discussion either directly or through a member of council without the permission of the mayor. And I have two sign-up sheets. If anybody else wants to speak, you're welcome to give a sign-up sheet to the clerk there. First one is Terry Clem. Oh, you know what? I'm sorry. If you wanted to wait, so we do have a public hearing later for the Fitzgerald area, so if people wanted to wait for the public hearing, they're welcome to do that, or you can do it now if you want to go home. It's up to you, but we will allow public comment during the public hearing section for the Fitzgerald area. So I've turned away Terry Clem. And then we have David Bane.
Hi, I'm here to ask you to support adopting new park impact fees, and I'd like to suggest that commercial property be included as well. My reason for that is that I spend a lot of time in Bothell Parks, and there are people who come from businesses. For example, there are groups of us that play ultimate frisbee and soccer at lunchtime, and that's basically people in the business park or by the North Creek Sports Field to get together and run around for an hour, and we get our park use in that way. Also, in the evenings, a lot of the adult league teams are originally business-based, so Microsoft might get a team together, or Boeing might get a team together, and because those are businesses in the area, they're playing in Bothell. And over time, you know, some of those business people tend to be replaced by friends, so it does take more of a who lives there approach as opposed to who works there. But, you know, businesses are an important element of how the parks get used. And then I think the scale of fees that were talked about last week are quite affordable on the residential side. For example, typically, those will be included in the purchase price of a home, and if you got a 30-year mortgage, that means that fee is being spread out over 30 years, so even if you're in that high, you know, 2,000-plus category, you know, you're spending maybe $20 a month by the time you take interest into account. And if you're buying a 2,000-plus square foot house, $20 is probably not a big factor in your monthly budget. So, you know, I think those fees are reasonable. You know, I think our park system is underfunded. And last point I'd like to make is that there were very low percentages in the capital facilities plan, and what that means is that we're planning to reduce our level of service in the park area at a time we should really be increasing it to get us closer to the national standards. So we need to update the capital facilities plan for the park level we'd like to have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Steven Edward Johnson.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. My name is Steve Johnson, and I own a piece of property up by the Palm Creek subdivision. And last week and this week, they have started tearing down the trees, and probably that's what's motivated me to be here tonight. It's kind of sad. And I have sent some emails to you, and you've all received them. But I also read in the Bothell Bridge here an article that I don't necessarily agree with, called "New Protection for Our Local Streams." And what LID is going to do is infiltrate water on that property. And normally, LID might be best management practices, but because it's so close to a ravine and Palm Creek, it is going to cause greater erosion. And you have established, during the process of establishing the North Creek Fish, Wildlife, and Critical Habitat Protection Area. In those documents, it talks about some goals. Some of those goals include reducing the sediment, opening the stream up for fish, and finding park space in the Snohomish area. And it seems like your documents are opposed to each other. In one case, you're telling me that you're going to cut down on the sediment, but then you're going to use LID in the Palm Creek Subdevelopment Division, which is going to create water going across my property, a greater amount of water going across my property, which is going to create more erosion in the ravine and create more sediment going into that stream. So on one hand, you're telling me that you want to protect it, and yet today I drove by and observed what was going on, and in my opinion, there was a safety issue towards the, around 3 o'clock, they were taking down some very large trees next to 35th, and there was no, you know, street people stopping people while they were taking down those trees. Anyway, and also observed a curiosity, I'm kind of wondering why the Quadrant Corporation or their subcontractor is delivering logs to the site, because I've seen trucks coming and leaving empty that are logging trucks, which is kind of a curiosity to me. So in general, I guess I'm just trying to express my concern for my property, and I am frustrated by what's being done there. I feel it is going to increase the temperature in Palm Creek, which is the only stream during the hottest months of the year that provides cool water to North Creek and the salmon habitat there. And now I think that habitat basically is being destroyed, and yet, like I said, in the North Creek Fish and Wildlife Critical Habitat Protection Area, one of the things is to protect the salmon habitat. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you for coming. Is there anybody else that would like to provide public comment? Seeing none, we'll move right along to the, so we're going to skip the old business, and we're going to move into the public hearing for AB 16-107, Public Hearing Regarding Potential Plan and Code Amendments to the Fitzgerald, 35th Southeast and Canyon Creek, 39th Southeast Subarea Plans, and Bothell Municipal Code 1250 and 1252. And we have, where's my process? There is staff presentation by Darren Sandano and Paul Fendt of Parametrics, Tom Bradette, Community Development Director, and Bruce Blackburn, Senior Planner. Oh, and I officially opened the public hearing.
Thank you, Council. Good evening. Tonight, we are in the process of moving the Fitzgerald analysis forward with a public hearing. As you know, we've had three workshops with stakeholders. Study session occurred on June 14. Public hearing tonight, we've, the staff has established a website, and that website has, has information on it concerning several products that have been generated from this effort, both technical memorandum, one on the Low-Impact Development Analysis, another one on Best Available Science that supports low-impact development techniques and best management practices for critical areas. We've also, we've also put up on the website Pathway Matrix that was presented last week, and a report from Kristin Green on the public engagement process. So those are all available on the city's new website. Staff has structured this process to evaluate best available science concurrently with changes to regulations, and we're still in the process changes to regulations, and we're still in the process of formulating those changes to the regulations. With that, it's important that we keep that dialogue ongoing throughout the process, whether or not we make substantial changes by removing the NICU CHOPA special protection overlay, or just do some surgery to it. All of those options are available, and we'll talk about those tonight. Also, the council may have some direction regarding the base zoning for those areas, and we've heard some information from the stakeholders concerning whether or not the R5400A is the appropriate base zoning for that area or not, and there are some things we can talk about there as well. As a brief overview, we have Bruce Blackburn here tonight on the city staff, Senior Planner, Darren Sandano with Parametrics, and Paul Fenn with Parametrics. You've already heard a presentation from Ben Burke last week, and also the presentation with Kristin Green. So we've come forward with a good public engagement process. I think we have a good feel for the issues. At the end, I think we can help give you some staff recommendations on where we think we should go from here. I'll take the opportunity at this point to turn the time over to Paul Fenn, who will guide us through the discussion tonight, and we'll leave most of the time open for the public hearing, so we can hear back from the residents. We'll come back on the 28th, and on the 28th, we hope to have an outline of direction where we want to go to actually bring forward some amendments to the development regulations and a more detailed evaluation of the best available science behind those amendments, so that we can come back in July 19th with a resolution that sort of identifies those areas of change. We'll then confirm those with the council, get out our computers and type up those changes and bring back a legislative edit version of some code amendments back to you in September. So that's our plan of attack. I'll turn the time over to, our consultant's gotta walk. Well, then, maybe we ought to just dive into the public hearing. Unless you have any comments, Bruce? Sorry, he probably thought we had a little more time than we moved ahead.
So you'd like us to take public comment now?
Yes, sir.
You're gonna be disappointed, there's only two people that signed up, so. First person is Terry Clem.
Good evening, members of the council. I'd like to comment on the Fitzgerald subarea potential code amendment deliberations that we've been having for literally years now. Although it's been years, ten for us, I really appreciate where we are tonight. A lot of hard and sometimes frustrating, and time and effort has been spent by all of us collectively. However, my feeling of where we are tonight is that we're in the ninth inning, we're on the 18th green, and we're down to game seven. I thought about the promise that you made to us a long time ago, us being the property owners in Zone 1, the promise to, quote, "make it work for you." You will soon have that chance, and I urge you to fulfill that promise by giving us a pathway to develop our property in a simple, straightforward, and responsible manner, unencumbered by heavy-handed overlay, that to date has been the sole reason that developers have walked away from 16 purchase and sale agreements to my wife and I alone. So we have completed the progress, the process, almost. We have compromised, and we have collaborated. Please do your part and commit to your promise. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person is, oh, we've got two different sheets going here.
Good evening, Council. I'm Suzanne Burnell, and I'm a licensed geologist, hydrogeologist in the state of Washington, a Bothell resident. I wanted to talk to you on two topics tonight. First, the engagement process, and then, secondly, the draft technical memos provided by Parametrics. So first of all, thank you. I think your intention for the engagement process was that we would come together with people with different perspectives and interests, and we would, in fact, learn from each other and talk to each other, which was a big step forward. And I think that some of that happened, but my comment about the engagement process was that it was frustrating, and at times I felt that we were being led and prescribed down a fixed path. I felt also that there were few opportunities to talk with each other, and that was the point of the engagement process. Where we did have that opportunity, we actually couldn't capitalize on it. In meeting two, Mr. Bob Vick, a developer, myself, Mr. Jim Phillips, a resident, and our group that we were meeting together, we actually all came to consensus that, in fact, we didn't want to provide an arbitrary list of our favorite LID technologies, because A, we didn't really know what they were referencing. And so there was no mechanism to build on that consensus, so it was lost. In meeting three, we got an 11-by-17 sheet, four pathways, four-point font, with referenced all sorts of municipal codes, design standards. There was no way that anyone in that third meeting could understand the ramifications of that spreadsheet. It was very confusing. But at the end of that meeting, we were required to pick our favorite pathway. I think that was a misleading request. And with respect to the best available science parametric memos, sorry, I lost my train of thought, but they're not best available science memos. They're best management practice and they're regulatory summaries, which have value, but they're not, they don't encompass the best available science available. And Ms. Kirsten Green suggested that when we commented on the best available science memos, that maybe we didn't understand the process, those of us that commented. Not true. And I want to give you a specific example. A number of the property owners have commented that there were test pit excavations that showed that they didn't have shallow groundwater on their property or nearby. Don't you think that would have informed our engagement process in a different way? We could have talked about real information. We have water quality data on North Creek that the Parametrics memos do not summarize yet. That would have been really important for us to know. Was water quality getting better or worse? We still don't know. So my feeling is that we have not in any way, oh, the other thing was GIS coverages. Parametrics presented forest cover, impervious surface cover maps. These are not like roadmaps that are fact. These are interpretations, so we still don't know the basis of the interpretations that these maps are based on. So I guess my comment to you is, I appreciate the engagement process. I think that we really need to do more talking amongst each other, but it was a very flawed engagement process, in my opinion. And secondly, we still are waiting for the best available science that will inform this process and help all of us, developers, residents, those interested in water quality, understand how to move forward, and the city council as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person is Brian Pearson, City Clerk. Are the lights working on the, okay.
Should be working. I'm gonna reset your time, I don't know.
I guess I'll go ahead without the projector. The first one, you can actually probably see pretty well from where you are.
Could you reset his time?
Okay, I'll go ahead with what I had prepared here. As many of you know, there is only one tiny section of land in northeast Bothell called the Fitzgerald SubArea that is subject to this unique and experimental LID overlay. It has been called a mistake, a wrong that needs to be made right, and many other things, and this council has honorably committed to making it right and doing so by July, so we can finally have clarity. Those of us that live in Zone 1 of the subarea have effectively been saddled with the building moratorium for several years on our perfectly good land, and as seen in this map, this is land that would otherwise have been developed responsibly like all the other non-LID land around us, using proper environmental safeguards. I think there may be a misconception that if we get rid of LID, it's gonna be rip and roll, you know, that everything's just gonna be stripped to the ground, and of course, that's not allowed with critical areas and proper setbacks and other environmental requirements with regard to water and storm management. We have engaged painstakingly in the public process to see this matter resolved fairly inequitably. We believe Zone 1 does not belong in the subarea, subject to LID, given our great distance from North Creek, our slopes, water flow patterns, excellent soil tests, which were referred to a little bit ago, and a healthy dose of common sense that arises as you walk the properties. This is the same map, just zooming in on that area, which allows you to see how the east portion of Zone 1 is kind of this appendage sticking out there all by itself. We've all been waiting patiently for the new science study to guide this decision. To this end, the council laid important groundwork, especially during the April 12 study session where Parametrics made their first presentation. At that meeting, the mayor and other council members asked critically important questions about the health of the streams and soils, especially the soils in Zone 1 where all the concern exists, noting that the unique LID overlay would not be necessary if the soil condition was good. There was great anticipation over what the new study would finally say about the development potential in Zone 1, and direction was given by the council to answer these important environmental questions for Zone 1 with potential revisions to the zoning requirement. So my question finally is, how can we build a university, a community college, major commercial development, and massive housing projects adjacent to these same critical areas on each side of the creek, and now ask a small group of property owners furthest away and far less impacting to the streams to bear a disproportionate ecological burden for the entire region when their land is hydrologically sound? Zone 1 needs to be excluded from the LID overlay, and I believe this council is capable of making that right. More complexity is not the answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person is Susan Berry.
I really came tonight to thank a whole bunch of people. I want to thank staff for the haruculin effort they have made, and council, and especially all the property owners in Zone 1 who came to every single mediation meeting. And I actually agree with everything Suzanne Burnell said, which is a surprise. The time commitment has been huge for many years. We have friends who are here, who went to Bothell High School, have come back to the city, raising their families now, and are supporting us, and they're listening. And I know it's the right time to right a wrong, and hopefully, we can get it done this year. I just really hope you can. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person is Tom Berry.
Good evening. I'm totally exhausted. It's 19 years. I feel as though we're on a springboard on the edge of an abyss now, with all of the new LID requirements to state. This is Western Washington-wide, new stormwater regs coming up, which we'll be subject to, and I just don't have good feelings about what's coming. I hope I'm wrong. I really do. I really feel that we're gonna be stuck again in limbo. And again, I hope I'm wrong. I want to thank a lot of people, though, that allowed us to get this far. It's been a long journey, and that's all I have to say for now. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the end of my sign-up sheets. Does anybody else would like to speak on this during the public hearing? We'll leave it open as well, it'll be next week, so. Okay, oh, my computer shut down. So I guess we're gonna revert back to Plan A and have Mr. Fenn provide a presentation?
Thank you. I've been asked to, on behalf of the staff, to give kind of an overview, a quick overview and summary of something that you looked at quite a bit last week, and that is some of the key elements in the pathways table that Ben Burke went through in somewhat great detail. So this is what that was, and I think you've seen this before, and the purpose is not to look at this and try to read this, it's almost intentionally tiny and small, so you don't look at it. But the idea here is that this is all stuff that you looked at and that Ben went over, and I want to pluck out a piece in the middle that's highlighted here and really focus on these parts, because there's a couple of important things I think we wanted to point out as far as what the range of choices are in implementing some of the key LID provisions. So what this table, what you see now represents that highlight that I just showed you, and just to help catch up, is that you heard about pathways 1, 2, and 3, and I'm gonna just focus on the forest cover regulations, the effective impervious area, and the LID stormwater standards. So last week, when Ben was talking, he talked about pathway 1 was basically a development-oriented approach, which was just low-intensity development. And because of low-intensity development, there are a number of threats that seem to go away regarding LID or low-impact design, or threats to the water resource, to the stormwater resource. Pathway 2 is what we call, and these are general descriptions, but I think they're useful and helpful. Pathway 2 is prescriptive, which means, just to recap, is if you're going to do a series of specific actions or protections, and you follow those instructions, then you will be expected, it's expected or anticipated that you will be in compliance, and you have no further responsibility to demonstrate compliance. So follow the rules, you'll be in compliance. The demonstrated pathway is kind of on the other end of it, and that is, is that rather than saying, "Look at this, protect this, do it this way," it's saying that we have a standard, or we have an expectation from the basin, from your site, of how stormwater comes out, or how the water resources are protected. And if you follow and meet the standards that are set, in any way that you, developer, the landowner feel that is the most appropriate way to do it, following guidelines like stormwater manuals, if you do that, we set a standard for you, and you find the way to work through that process and meet that standard. So that's kind of demonstrates the range of what's talked about here. So as a means of an example of how each of these three key things would fit in each of these pathways, and under the low-intensity development, the expectation is that there would be so little development that would occur, there would really not need to be any additional protection in the forest cover regulations, that just there wouldn't be the level or... the level or intensity of development that would occur. Whereas in the prescriptive, and this is where we start talking about the range of choices, because the outcome is expected to be the same, meaning that we are talking about hydrology and what the effect is of development on hydrology from a site, and what the consequent effect is on streams. So in the prescriptive approach, the prescriptive approach would say, preserve forests, that the best way to replicate or have forest hydrology is to have a forest there. In contrast, the demonstrative approach is set is that we say that there is a standard, which is the LID standard, or we say we incentivize forest retention, meaning that you can, you, we prefer maybe that you retain forests, that is a preferred LID approach. But instead of that, you could also use an LID measure that replicates it, as long as that LID measure is equivalent to a forest. So the range is, leave it alone, and we'll know that you're protecting it, provide an LID measure that provides the same hydrologic performance, that provides the bookends for these two approaches. And the second part, in the effective area standards, it's the same deal. Pathway 1, low intensity, we don't expect that any of the developments would have more than 10% impervious, and it certainly wouldn't be effective impervious. So we don't need, we believe that there would not need to be really any additional standards applied. Again, in the prescriptive, the idea is, is that we would maintain what the existing 20% effective impervious area, which is the existing condition, so there'd be no loss of, of that effective impervious area. That would be the prescriptive approach. The demonstrative looks about the same way, but basic, looks like the same thing, but it's basically, there is an expectation that you mitigate bias, meeting a standard in any way that you can, meaning through a regional facility, through a stormwater pond, through applying LID. But you have a standard to meet, and you meet the standard. So the last part is the LID stormwater standards. And one thing, again, as you've heard and before, and I want to point out, is, is that these standards are no longer unique to this area. They are applied, or will, are or will be applied Western Washington wide. So these are the same standards that we're talking about everywhere. So when I talk about the prescriptive part of this, we talk about preference. And so we talk, we say that as a designer, as an engineer, I can go to a site and make choices. And the range of choices in LID is anywhere from preserving forest, preserving a soil, to applying an LID measure, to applying very effective LID measures, to providing more exotic or different measures. But the, the idea is, is that you have a range. So in the prescriptive part, we say, and I won't go through these as an example, I'll just describe it in general, is that in the prescriptive part, we say, you should preserve forests, that's the best choice to make. In the demonstrative, we say, you have a standard to meet, meet that standard by applying LID. So again, it's the same concept, is, is that you are, preserve forests, you restore forestlands or protect soils, all in the prescriptive approach. You meet the impervious area thresholds. But in the demonstrative, you are given a standard, and you find any way that you can in order to apply, using the stormwater manual, but making choices so you meet a standard. So that's a, the summary of, kind of, we wanted to point out again, help it, understand that range of things that are within these different pathways relative to stormwater and to LID.
Oh, you're done?
I'm done.
That was it? Okay. So in our agenda, it said that we were going to have a public comment after we ask questions. So if there are more questions that the public would like to have, feel free to do that after the council asks questions. Who would like to go first? Councilmember Ragni.
I have one question. Does Zone 1 need to be here? And I know it's going to take a little bit of time, and you probably don't want to give me that answer right now until we get all the, the rest of the information, but that's a question I have.
I'll, I'll take an approach at answering the question, and I'm going to focus it very narrowly on two things. One is, is on critical areas ordinances, and the second is on stormwater and LID. I know most about stormwater and LID. But from the critical areas perspective, I think those are, we've been under critical areas ordinances for a long time, those are fairly well understood. I don't think there's a lot of debate or dispute about that, or there's certainly not in the range of what I think we were talking about here. The second question is really around, is there something unique about the property, or is there something special that should be applied based on the standards? And I, I think that there are unique aspects of the property, but then I relate to what are the standards, or what the standards can do. And I, again, when I speak about standards, I speak about LID. And I don't believe that there's anything that the LID can't mitigate from the perspective of the land. So if that results in a, in a, in a decision that says there shouldn't be the overlay or the Zone 1, that would be an outcome. But I, I'm just describing that LID can be very effective. There are different choices that can be made or directed, but they are very effective, and I think they would be effective at, at addressing virtually any landscape that we find in, in kind of an urbanized area of Western Washington.
You have an uncle. Deputy Mayor?
Okay, I, I find this all very confusing. I, I have a question in regards to the draft technical memorandum.
Okay.
Where you talk about applying the best available science to the Fitzgerald area. And it says, the following are recommendations for consideration by stakeholders during the citizen engagement process. So are these to be used in the demonstrative? It talks about, for instance, designating the area as efficient wildlife habitat conservation area, increasing buffers, allowing the development director to increase buffers. Does this sound familiar? Do you know what I'm talking about?
It's best if I look at it, but it's, it's definitely familiar.
So I'm trying to understand how this applies to the pathways, because I, I don't, I can't make that connection.
Well, at the risk of maybe repeating myself and just tell me if I'm not answering the question, is that I think that there are, and again, I'll focus on stormwater management as an example. Stormwater management is a risk-based approach. It's a risk-based field, meaning that we, hydrology is involved. Hydrology talks about small storms and big storms. We talk about percentages of effectiveness and so on. We talk about lots of things and so on, and that we, we, it's not like a bridge that we know what's, when it's going to stand up. Stormwater is more of, we're trying to make sure that it stands up most, that works most of the time, and that it works because we can't be ready for every single storm event, no matter how large, every single flood, no matter how large. So everything that we do is based on risk management. So this, so the, the way we, the way the demonstrative and prescriptive works around risk management is, is that the less risk you take, or the less changes that you make, the more likely you're going to be effective, or that, and the more chances you take, the more you're applying technology, the more you're applying built facilities, the more chances you're taking. So if you're looking at stormwater and these decisions, you're looking at that list of decisions as saying, is this something that is less risky, or is this something that puts belts and suspenders on something? Is this something that even though we understand our models and our approaches, it's more risky, and we're not 100% certain it's going to the way we, it worked the way we expected to? Does that help?
Yes. So did I hear you correctly when you said that all these pathways are equivalent?
From the stormwater perspective, yes. From the LID perspective, they are equivalent.
They're equivalent. Are they equivalent in protecting the environment?
They are. When, when we do stormwater management, when we do LID, we lay out the standard of what the expectation is for the level of protection that's provided. And so we, all the measures are intended to arrive at the same place. But I have to point out the risk management part again, and that is, is that a forest is always going to work hydrologically as a forest. A forest equivalent LID should work the same, but there's a possibility it won't. If it's not maintained properly, if it's not protected for, forever, then it may not work the same. So it's, it's really risk, but from the perspective of the science, and from the perspective of engineering, and numbers, and hydrology, they are reasonably equivalent.
So are you saying that pathway 1 is the least risk pathway?
Yes, because there's a least amount of development that has to be addressed or mitigated for.
And then are, in terms of development, is there a pathway that's preferred, or did we hear about that at, at these sessions in regards to the development community?
I won't speak for kind of the preferences, because I think they were, I'm not sure I, it was, it would be fair for me, I would, I would feel like I would be applying a bias if I, I heard different things and I didn't speak to all people all the times.
Well, I, I mean, I, I just want to know, where does everybody stand?
So I'll, I'll describe where, I, I have an opinion about which direction these lean toward, because we applied it in the information that we've, that we've done, as far as making these tables and determining this work. And generally speaking, the, and, and this is really, again, for, for development community to decide, in the demonstrative approach, you have the most opportunity to make the most decisions about a piece of land, to get, be the most efficient or effective, or gain the most out of the land. You have the most options available to you. But it also has the most amount of uncertainty with the process to get to the approval. So that's the first question, which one of those is more important if you're developing land? Prescriptive is, has much more certainty into what the process is, and what you expect to get out of the land, but it can be, in certain circumstances, less efficient or less effective, or you might lose something just because of this prescription that was done on a property. So you may not be able to get the most out of it, but the process should be the most direct and the most simple.
Okay. Because what we had heard in the past was, it wasn't working because there, it wasn't clear for the development community what the process was, and there were too many uncertainties. So I'm, I'm trying to nail down what the preference is.
Well, I, I can't, I, I don't know why that is, but I can offer one, I thought, on that. And this has to do with, I've been involved in the state, as we've been, as the state regulations have been evolving to adopt and accept LID. So remember, and when LID was first proposed in the, in the MPDS permits in 2008, there was a ecology said, please do it if you can. And there was a big, the appeal over the permit at that time was, no, you should do it first where feasible, rather than where you can. So that was the first shift. And then it's continued to evolve into being, there've been more applications of it, and more people have been using, and so on. So when it started, there were two, two or three pieces of uncertainty. What is it? How do you do it? The reviewers had very little experience at reviewing it, so they didn't know what to have, do it. The designers had little experience at doing it. So there was a lot of, it was different, and so the review process had a lot of uncertainty to it. So nobody knew what, what was really going to come out of it. So and some element of it is, is that the uncertainty that is around the process itself, because it was unusual and different than what people were familiar with. And now we're at a place where it's required where feasible, all the jurisdictions are required to remove the barriers to applying it, there are a number of projects that have been built, we've seen mistakes made, we've seen successes. So there's, and the reviewers now have experience, there's training around, the designers have more experience. So everybody has more experience, so that as we evolve, like anything that's new, as we evolve through it, the experiences are better, and the uncertainties becomes, is removed. I'm just talking about the LID parts, but that, so there's, we're in a different place in time as far as the field is concerned with the uncertainty than we were six, eight, 10 years ago.
Okay, one more question. So are you saying these, the new LID standards that are now, I guess statewide, are equivalent to the special overlay that we had put on this area? I thought I heard you say that, but I, I want to make sure that that's what I heard. Or what you said.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I would answer it and say, I couldn't tell you exactly for sure, but the same words are used, and there is, and, and the definition of LID has, has evolved. My belief and understanding from being in this process is, is that the LID that we're talking about, you know, six, eight, 10 years ago, is the same LID as we're talking about now. It's just more defined, more accepted, a lot more is understood about the process.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Community Development Director, did you want to add to that?
I think Deputy Mayor's question is, is a good one regarding the current code and its clarity. And I think that, that, that's really why we're engaged in this process. And going into it, I read through it, and I said, I think it's, I think this is difficult to administrate, just from an administrator perspective. So I also paid an hour of time to have our hearing examiner read it and give me his impression of it. And he said, I'm glad I've never had it before me, because I find it very, very confusing and difficult to logically follow, follow through it with a pathway on what one should do to comply. So that's why, whichever pathway we choose going forward out of the matrix, staying with the current regulations for the overlay protection is one that we would not recommend you do.
And that was pathway 4, correct?
Well, pathway 4 would amend it in some fashion, but, but we wouldn't want to stay with that, we would recommend that the city not stay with that same hybrid demonstrative regulatory, kind of permissive type of code. So we, we have focused our, our recommendations and attentions mostly on pathways 1 through 3.
Okay. Thank you.
Would you like to go? I've got a whole list of questions. Okay. So I've looked through all this material, at least what we've been given tonight, and one of the main figures that popped out in my head was in the technical memo that Deputy Mayor was speaking to, and it's on page, page 70 of our packet. Actually, I'm sorry, page 7069, is it? Where'd it go? Hold on, just a second. No, not the first page. It's, it's the figures, where it shows the footprint of all the buildings. And so it, obviously, the, the watershed for the two creeks, Palm Creek and Coal Creek, Wood Creek, Woods Creek, they've extended pretty far, there it is, outside of our jurisdiction. And so what I'm, what I'm first trying to understand, because since 2006, a lot's happened, and we have a map about that that we can show here in a second. Do we have a habitat in that creek that is, is still special? Have we, has it been destroyed mainly because of the development that has occurred outside of the city? Which in the diagram up on the chart here, it's Area 4 and Area 3, you can see within the city, it's not developed.
Well, the short answer is, is that we haven't done a rigorous, rigorous evaluation that truly characterizes it, but we have done a, you know, we've looked at places where we can look. And I, I think there's two parts to it. One is, is that the degradation of these systems take time and/or events. So if this is fairly recent development, it's possible if there are, is degradation in place because the hydrologies changed, that it just hasn't showed up yet. But right now, I, I haven't, in the places where we've looked, the stream looked reasonably unaffected by large amounts of development. That's, that's the, the farthest I can go with the amount of looking that we did at the stream.
And then have you guys looked at the development standards, or pulled the, the technical information reports for the development that has occurred outside of the city, and what design standard, stormwater design standard they used?
No, we haven't.
Okay. I imagine it's probably Santa Barbara, because it's Snowmish County, it was back vested in pre 2000, what is it, 2013, that we actually had floateration required anywhere?
Right.
I think most of that was built, or probably vetted, vested prior to that? Would that be a fair assumption? Or I guess you, you said you guys haven't looked at when the development occurred?
We haven't looked at, we haven't dated all those. There's a, the map that is in here, I don't know if it has a There's a, the map that is in here, I don't know if it has the dates in it, but.
It's on page 45 of the packet.
This, this one here?
Yep.
So. The blue, the blue squares are the ones that were developed after 2006. So somewhere in there, there's a manual, stormwater manual that may or may, may have changed. And so the standard would be upgraded, but 2006 isn't that long ago, so. But it's hard to, it's really hard to understand or know when development processes started and which development in, in time. So, so the short answer again is no, we haven't looked at, kind of dated, kind of done a historic carbon dating of each of these subdivisions to see where they're at, no.
Okay. Did, I guess this kind of follows the same. So when I, when I looked at this map, the map that we have up now, did we pull the geotechnical reports to see what the soils? Did it had, what it said in the reports?
No.
Did the map of the soils on page? Page 45, I guess it is. I keep saying 45, I don't know why. Yeah, that one. What's the source of that data?
This is a, in the GIS maps, but it's based on Soil Conservation Service.
The 1960s one?
Yes, as far as I know. I, I, this is GIS data that was made available to us.
Mr. Blackburn, do you know the date of your geo, geological map?
I don't have the, I don't have the precise date, but we actually, we have been in contact with Snohomish County to get some of those TIRs and some of those background data information sources. One of the issues with Snohomish County is that they've had such a long history of projects coming in. And usually what occurred was that before they did a change to one of their zoning, to one of their classifications provisions, particularly surface water, they got a whole pile of applications come in. The ones in yellow on that little map are generally newer applications from 2014 to 2015. So those probably would have a little higher provision as far as the surface water.
So just one other quick question. The, the ones that are in, so in the, in the notes, it said the yellow ones in Snohomish County are in review. But we have yellow boxes or they look yellow, I guess on my computer. This is page.
Yeah, and they're supposed to be kind of more of a green color.
So those are green?
Yes.
Okay. And that meant, the green ones meant that they are built inside the city?
Those are built within the city of Bothell.
And so do we have any that are in the development process? In the, inside the city?
Just one, and I believe it's a small one, it's like a short subdivision.
That one kind of right in the middle of the city portion?
There you go, yep.
Okay. So, and then a few times in the, in the technical memo, it says. Modernized to reflect the new 2006. So the LID overlay can be modernized to reflect the new 2016 manual. Could you give us some specifics about what that means? Compared to, compared to the old code, you know, I'm, I'm familiar, I don't know if everybody's familiar with the 2016 manual, but what? I, I understand that piece, but what, where is it now and where, how would we modernize it?
I guess I'm not, can I ask it again? I'm not sure exactly, we couldn't, how can you, how, what, what's the differences between where we're at and what the new manual will include?
Well, the, yeah, because I, it's been a while since I read the LID overlay. And I'm trying to remember what portion of it would actually be modernized to? I just, I don't see the connectivity between the 2016 manual and the LID overlay that we have. Like how, how would it modernize it?
Yeah.
Sorry. Essentially what you have is within the LID overlay in 2006, a custom, basically surface water manual was crafted and made a separate chapter within our Bothell Design and Construction Standards. That was based upon 2005, 2006 technology. So basically what we'd be looking at is that that customized LID manual that was based back in 2006. Would be basically supplanted with our 2016 citywide LID manual. That's kind of the approach that I think has been discussed. But again, we're still kind of in the flux on this particular project.
So there was a technical appendices to the surface water design manual in 2006?
There was, yes.
And we didn't destroy that by accident in 2000 and whatever it was that when we updated the surface water design manual?
We had a long conversation about what was the applicability. And the problem is that the code still referred to that technical appendix, if you would. And so we kind of had to hang on to it. So that is still in effect in this area.
Just to kind of give everybody that's here some background. So I wrote the surface water design manual that's currently, I was not on the council at the time, I was working for the city. And I remember Mr. Blackburn got ahold of me and said, do you, do you know about this LID overlay over here in the Fitzgerald area? And it was the 11th hour. When I, so just give everybody a little background about how complicated the stormwater design manual is just by itself. And then all of a sudden, we had this other thing that we, we tried to rectify. I'd say we could have probably done a better job if we had more time, but it just kind of goes to show how it's really difficult, the way it's written. The, the LID requirements we have and how you relate it and fix it into the state standard manual and then the local adopted version of the manual. So, thank you. So pathway three, you, you just mentioned in your presentation, this is from Mr. Fenton, that there's, what are the examples of the standards? Are you talking about like the LID performance standard or are you talking?
Yes.
For pathway three?
The LID performance standard, yes.
So looking at the, so looking at the, well, you know as well, I do. If you're, if you require the LID performance standard, you have to be able to infiltrate or else your, your project site's pretty much going to be one big vault.
Yes, there is a term I use on a, in something related, it's called infinite detention.
Infinite, yeah. So it's really important that we understand the soils if we say you have to meet the LID performance standard.
That's right.
And we don't have that data, so we would really need to know that if, if we were going to make that, I guess, a special requirement of this area over the rest of the city. Because the rest of the city can do the list or the LID performance standard, correct?
Well, this area would be able to do the list or just apply the LID and do the other standard. I, I think, I think the key on this is, is that. The way the manuals are set up right now, no matter how much information we might have generally about soils in the area and so on, we still have to do site specific work at where we're planning to do the infiltration. So there's almost no way to get a really comprehensive feel for the infiltration or infiltrability of the site. And that's why it kind of comes back to that, when I describe the demonstrative, yes, it is a standard, but, and yes, it would, it can be a difficult standard. I mean, it, it could be something that if the conditions aren't suitable, you, you won't meet the standard and you won't get the amount of development you may be expecting. But that's part of the risk of demonstrative, of the demonstrative is, is that you get all the benefits when it's better than you thought and you get none of the benefits when you, it's worse than you thought.
So you, going forward, and I guess this is probably a staff question, would we recommend allowing for the, the list and the LID performance standard? Or would we just do the LID performance standard? Do you guys understand what the list, the list means? You should have brought your stormwater engineer. Oh, he's got one.
Well, yes, I think what we would have to do is we would have to be prepared for those type of sites that could not accept the infiltration that we hope is out there. And so we probably would have to have a list potential as well. But those are things that we, we've kind of just started to discuss as far as which pathway we're going to go. And then we're going to start doing some of the really detailed work on that.
Okay. So the, so the forest cover, that was a big concern previously. And has there been any analysis done of, I think it's in here, where it gives you the existing forest cover versus what we were saying is required by the zone? The underlying land use zone?
Like, are you asking how much, how much forest cover is there? Do we have a good day, a basis for that?
Yeah.
Again, we use the available data from the, from GIS. And it was intended to give us an idea on, well, you know, like if there was no forest, then we'd have a different conversation. Or if there is, you know, all forest, we'd have a different conversation. But this is the best available piece of information of what somebody at some point defined as forest cover. But when we go to the process, the idea was always going, would always be that we would define what forest cover means and it would have to be delineated, much like you would delineate a wetland.
They delineate existing forest is the idea?
Yes.
And then make it so that's permanently there? Is that what you're, or be like a critical, treat it as a critical area in this one area of the city?
I think it's, that's a good analogy to say that it would be like a critical area. I think the way to think about it in terms of stormwater is to think about it as it's part of your stormwater system. That basically if you have a chunk of forest, it's not any different from, from being part of your system as a stormwater pond would be or a swell would be.
So you'd, it'd just be a track, a set of sidetrack that you would?
Correct.
Get credit for in the volume of your stormwater facilities?
That's right, it would be part of your stormwater system.
Instead of having this, because we have a flat rate percentage, doesn't matter if it's pavement right now for each zone? That's what we have in our existing.
Yeah.
LID overlay. So the other, the other thing that I didn't really see a lot of information on in here is about the cut and fill requirements. So we really, there was some requirements in the existing code that you, to minimize the amount of cut and fill. Has there been any discussions about that piece? Because that was a hot topic, I believe, in the, the last go around. Do we know, is that something that you, we were going to look at or we were going to take out of?
So, so far what we've done is, is that there's, and I'll, I'll show you where his in the table, just so you know that it's there. But you can't, you can't read it, so you have to believe me. It is in the, in the section that's called potential gaps. So that is the stuff that we're still working on. So it, and that has to do with, with grading is, is like what, just, just how do we deal with that? With the grading of the groundwater parts? So short answer is no, we haven't, we haven't done it, but we have identified it as a missing.
Okay. And then I think I've probably exhausted my time asking questions here. Water quality in coal and Palm Creek, so we have no data on the actual, anything in there? No stream gauge, temperature gauge, water samples?
I have not looked for it or at it, no.
Okay. And this goes back to what the Deputy Mayor asked, and it was the best available science recommendations in one of the technical memos? And I'm just curious, are we, so are we trying to basically say, the recommendations basically say beef up the critical areas ordinance and retire the LID overlay? That's kind of what I got from looking at the bulleted list. Is that kind of what we were thinking? And then the, the requirements in this area and probably other parts of the city too, I would imagine, would be affected by changing the municipal code?
Well, that was actually one of the areas that we wanted to kind of explore a little bit, depending upon which pathway we pick. And there could be, and, and the beauty of using the critical area regulations is it's a, it's a provision that's been in place since 1992. There is some familiarity of it with the development community. And so we thought that might be one methodology to identify, let's say, the forest area or the, the surface water or some of the other provisions that might use. To put into like some type of a track system sort of, this really is protected. And that's one of the areas where I know that Ben Burke, the biologist half of the parametrics team, was basically saying he liked that approach. Because he had fairly good feel for our current critical area regulations and thought it could be an effective tool.
Yeah, I'd be curious that, I just wouldn't want to swap one bad deal for another bad, bad deal.
And that's one of the things where that gap analysis really comes into play where he's, hey, once you, okay, we're going to focus on these two or three pathways. And then you really get, you know, get the pencil out and you really start looking at those items and, and delve into it very, very deeply.
So and I got to be honest with you, I'm still struggling with understanding the multiple pathways. Because to me, it seems pathway one is for one acre or larger zoning. And then you've got pathways two and three, I don't even want to talk about pathway four, but pathways two and three, it's unclear about how that would. So we're going to, we're going to basically pull this thing off of the zoning code, right? And that's kind of the recommendation from staff? That's what I thought I heard the.
Well.
Director give.
Well, well, here's, yeah, we're still kind of looking at some of these things. But I can tell you that the idea behind pathway one, when we had the engagement meetings, we did have quite a few folks say, listen, I just want to build my house. Or I want to have one more lot on my property. Do I have to really go through this really detailed, complex process? Hire lots of engineers and experts to give me this analysis? Or can I just have a simple, easy way to have one or two lots or something like this? And that was the idea behind pathway number one, because again, it's a very large lot concept, which has got not a lot of impact upon the critical areas in the area. Pathway number two would be when you did the real, like a true subdivision or something more intense. And that would be where the prescriptive provisions came into play, where you actually said, okay, here is exactly how you're going to treat each of these different features as, as you've seen in the pathways, the matrix.
And then pathway three?
Well, I'm sorry, pathway three was basically the situation where some people were talking them out in the, in the engagement meetings. Well, what if I just don't mind spending a lot of money on some special studies or, or some other type of a process? Could I maybe do something different? And that was kind of the idea is, well, maybe there's more ways to approach this than just the true LID manual. And that's basically where we had that discussion. And the idea behind that is that if you are willing to go through that additional study to approve that you meet the standards, then maybe there is some flexibility we could apply as a city to this area. As long as we can assure ourselves that the resource is being protected.
Don't we have that pathway though already through the PUD? And then there's, there's provisions, it looks like in the code that says the community development director can.
Well, now it, it depends on what, you know, what column you're looking at here. The PUD has some very specific provisions about zoning code, you know, areas like lot size. Some, some things have some ability to reduce the, with your roads and things like that. It doesn't really address surface water provisions. And that's where this would come into play for that as well. So you do have a couple of different mechanisms out there that we may be able to pull from as we gather up the final, kind of like the final list of provisions, the outline of the code that we would want to provide you on July 19th, it is. So you could actually, okay, I see where we've kind of taken that code provision to go there. So, and that's one of the areas that we identified was that there are limitations in different portions of the code that we might use. We can't just use one, you know, like, oh, we'll just use the PUD and we're good. It has some limitations, so we may have to go with again, some type of a prescriptive approach within this subarea.
And would be just the subarea now?
Well, now it depends on what provision you're speaking to. The, many of the special LID things, we would probably have a conversation, okay, well, are these things that are citywide or not? We're going to have, of course, the base 2016 surface water manual that's citywide, but there may still be some provisions. And we've talked about forest cover. Okay, preserve existing forest cover. That would be a provision that would be within this subarea. Because our citywide provisions don't have quite as rigorous a requirement as they do within the Fitzgerald area. A lot of moving parts here.
Do we? So I just.
Director Burdes is going to come and help me here.
Okay.
Let me see if I can help a little bit. And Paul and Bruce, please, please feel free to jump in if I, if I get off track. But you're right, Mayor, with pathway number one. If you're subdividing one acre or larger parcels, larger lots, you could use the existing regulations as well as the new LID manual. And go ahead. You wouldn't have to, you wouldn't have to interact with any, any extra protection overlay. You just move forward. Pathway number two, we would replace the extra protection, nixu chapa with some other type of overlay. Something that's a little more simplified, but standard base and prescriptive. And then pathway number three would be something that incorporates the same type of protections in a demonstrative approach. Through a zoning vehicle like a PUD, probably our existing PUD would have to have some amendments made to it, as Bruce said. So that it was connected with the overlay or the process that gets at the necessary studies to achieve that same protection. Does that help?
Yeah, because I was worried we were supposed to choose a pathway and it's like I, I can't, I can't do that.
You know, and from our staff level, we think all one, two, and three are all have some merit. And pursue all of those is, is a recommendation.
By the way, have you, is there other areas of the city we should be looking at? Well, I have you, uh, is there other areas of the city we should be looking at for, looking at this type of protections? I mean, I'm just thinking from a citywide. What I don't like is this area has its own prescriptive situation. And it seems to be, is if, I don't know if it's misplaced or not at this point, because all we have is data from 2006 before. Uh, a lot of the development has occurred. And so is there other places in the city that, you know, do, should we look at the critical areas ordinance? As citywide and say, you know, there's, this is an example, but there's others.
Oh, it's a very good question. It's a very logical question indeed. Parametrics did review, it wasn't part of their scope, but they did review our critical areas ordinance. And they've come back and said it's in good condition. It's in good, it's, it's consistent with, uh, uh, where the growth management act requires us to be with our critical areas codes. So we think that's, we think that's a, a good affirmation that our critical area ordinance is, is where, where the city desires it to be. And it accomplishes what it should be accomplishing for the city. I don't know when the last time we did an inventory of critical areas was or whether it's ongoing in our GIS department. And so it's ongoing. So we haven't really focused in on that question specifically. But there's really no indication that we've had from any other, um, property owners or developers in the community that would suggest we need to do that. Is that fair?
Yeah.
Okay. I've taken a ton of time. Thank you. Is there, Councilmember McNeil, did you have any questions?
No, I think.
Good. So we're back to the process here. We were gonna reopen, uh, the floor to public testimony. Is there any other, did you guys want to do another round? So easy with four people. Is there anybody in the public that would like to provide public testimony? Please come up. First is Ann Agard.
Good evening. This has been a very interesting discussion. So, um, there's two things in the packet that Laura will hand you. One is a memo that I sent in May to Ben Berkey and Paul Fint. Making some recommendations about their factual sheet called what's, what has happened thus far. And in the back of that, I attached a map that they had not included in their review. Which is a map of the, a conceptual map of the shallow aquifer. That is, uh, exists in the Fitzgerald area, particularly in the eastern side. So that's for your review, if you did not look at it earlier when it was sent to you as an email. But I'm not going to address that. Instead, I'm going to address the footnotes that Ben Berkey had, um, on his pathways chart. I am not going to recommend a pathway to you either. But the first footnote I want to talk about is exactly what you were talking about tonight. Is what areas do you need to preserve in the current so-called LID? Which really should be called a designation rather than an overlay? Because that LID does a number of things, just as you were talking about. It's design standards for the actual LID. But it also has regulations, most importantly, to protect this shallow aquifer. Which was recognized in the parametrics 2006 study. And so those regulations to protect the cold water source to Cold Creek and North Creek cannot be replaced. And that's what footnote one is talking about. They cannot be replaced in the LID. They cannot be replaced in the critical areas ordinance. As I point out to you in your memo tonight, this cannot be covered in the Bothell critical areas ordinance. Because the designation under Bothell municipal code 1404.500 for aquifer recharge areas doesn't cover this. It covers potable water, which is a dinky water supply. So you cannot amend your critical areas ordinance to address this very important aspect that is covered in the current LID. And I have given you the citations where it's covered. The second footnote of Ben Berkey concerns the forest area. And he says, a robust and enforceable standard for forest will need to be developed. In the current code, uh, you do have a robust, uh, definition of forest. Which is not found anyplace else in any code. So I would like to answer one question that you asked, Andy, about other applicable areas. If you want to give me the additional time.
I don't decide that the council does. Do you want to give additional time?
Okay.
Uh, one more minute. Is one more minute okay?
Oh, I think so.
Okay.
So these two critical areas, this high, this shallow aquifer that feeds streams. And the need to protect the forested areas, which are not covered anyplace else. No critical areas ordinance, no code. The other place where you could use this is, believe it or not, Norway Hill. Because you have a very similar situation as you do in the Fitzgerald area. A very high aquifer. We've got streams coming down off of that hill fed by that aquifer. And they are flowing into the Sumamish River. You are now going to spend a million dollar, 11 million dollars to purchase the Wayne Golf Course areas. You really want that water going into the Sumamish River from Norway Hill. So you should be looking at that, particularly the top area where this recharge takes place. Whoops, in the same way that you're looking at Fitzgerald. So yes, I do believe there are other applicable areas. Okay?
Great, thank you. Next person.
For the time.
No problem.
Are there any other questions?
No, thank you. Andrea Perry. Did you give one to the clerk?
I, I did.
I did.
I did, yes. And do I just set this here while it show up? Is that how it works if I put this?
Hopefully. Yeah.
Oh, it's not gonna get the whole thing on it. I'll do it like this. Andrea Perry, by the way, I should give my name. I was gonna say that I also am not gonna recommend a pathway to you. But I do think that, um, because I was on council when this is happening and it's unfortunate. There are two other members that were part of this, but they're not here tonight. We were doing the update of the critical areas ordinance. And we were also doing the zoning and the code and comp plan changes for Fitzgerald. We were trying to get it all done in a very short period of time and we spent a lot of time doing it. But some of the things that Ann was mentioning about the aquifer issue, we knew that that wouldn't be covered under the critical areas ordinance. And that was a very, very important element for this area. So I would really hope that what you would do at this point is take what is currently there, the regulations that are currently there and compare them to your new LID regulations, which I think is, is very different from what we put together for the Fitzgerald area. There's, there are some things overlaps and I think that some of the regulations would go away in Fitzgerald with the LID and the stormwater. But some of them are very necessary. One thing's, uh, the things that I heard in the meetings were the inability in the 5400 attached to really make this work. So I would think that one of the things you might want to consider is taking a look at the zoning. Because in the R9600 LID and R40,000 LID, you do have what the mayor was referring to as that modification of development regulations. And that's what I have up here. And it actually may give, if that, if zone one was actually rezoned to 9600 LID. They may have more flexibility to get greater unit, a greater number of units. I don't know for sure, but it, it's a possibility. I like this modification. It's a clustering. It's, it's very much a clustering ordinance. There are some problems with it that I think need to be reviewed. And that is that, uh, the way it's worded now, the community development director is authorized to modify it. But there's no really clear criteria outlined on how this would work. And I think that's the missing element. And that's one of those things that is confusing to people is how do you make this work? How do you determine when you can modify? So I would, I would say, take a look at this for a zoning option. But then do more prescriptive regulations as far as when the modification would actually work. Because you don't want it to be a loophole. But, and you want to make sure that you have the preservation of those regulations that are keeping that area in the state that we need it to protect North Creek. Does that make sense? Do you understand?
But just a clarifying question, are you, is 1252040, that was proposed code from the past or?
That, that was code that was, uh, adopted in 2008, actually. So it was after the initial, initial run of regulations and code. Council came back in 2008 and they decided that for the, for those two areas, they wanted to have some kind of a lot size modification. Which of course will not work in 5400 attached because it's a different density calculation. You don't use the, the lot sizes. So it, it's just, it's just a possibility that that might allow extra flexibility for that area. And you certainly don't want to have really high density, especially now that you don't have the connector going through there to support it. So hopefully that would be a win-win situation.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Nope. Does anybody else, would anybody else like to speak that hasn't had a chance to speak yet? One at a time, please.
Uh, I wasn't planning to speak tonight. This is, I'm Kai Nelson. But, um, a couple of things that just have been coming to mind. Uh, I was at all three mediation sessions. It was kind of a gigantic waste of time and money. I don't know how much was spent, but, um, I wish you all could have been there. Cause it was, um, I kind of think back to the lawsuit that was stopped $10,000 short. That money could have probably been spent in a better way, um, to see that through and get an, an arbitration and get somebody to decide on it. It's too bad. So the science hasn't been done on the hill. It has, it still hasn't, like, there's science from before, but it, parametrics hasn't done the science. So that's concerning. We have data that says that it's dry. So is there anything else that needs to be done? And what we were told is that, well, councils didn't guide them to go do that work. So they went on this pathways thing, which is a little scary. Cause none of the pathways worked for the developers who were in the room. They all said none of them. That's, so I don't know if you can mix and match pathways or just throw the whole thing out. But I really feel like you really need to get the, the true experts, so the city staff planners, the developers and parametrics in a room. To then talk about what actually will work in this particular area. And then come to you with their recommendation. Homeowners, save, we, we, we have a save, but they're, we're not experts. So you really need to get the experts in a room and to really come up with something that will actually work. Yeah. I guess that's it for now. Thanks.
Thank you. Do they have another taker? Okay, coming up, say your name for the record.
I'm Steve Johnson and I spoke before and my property is outside the Fitzgerald area. But, um, I would just, somebody mentioned plan four. And, um, you know, here, and we've mentioned the Wayne Golf Course and we're purchasing the Wayne Golf Course or we're hoping to come up with the funds for it. And we have these park impacts fees for, um, properties or open spaces or parks, I mean. What about paying property owners for their property if they want to develop and buy it? So because we as citizens of the city of Bothell are wanting to protect that, 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 um, those areas and those resources. But it's, it's not fair to those property owners to have that, so to speak, added tax burden added to them. Because they're protecting that prop, their properties or we're making rules, forcing them or developers to protect that property for basically all of the city, uh, all of the citizens of Bothell. So it's a huge expense, I know, but so is the Wayne Golf Course. I think it's something we should look at. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comments this evening? Please.
Good evening. I'm Mike Patterson with the Master Builders Association. I'm actually here to speak about something else later in the agenda, but I couldn't help myself on this issue. We know clustering, what you're referring to as clustering is lot size averaging in most jurisdictions. And we found it to be an excellent tool for making the most out of a parcel or a piece of property. You are not changing the density whatsoever. What you're allowing is flexibility within that site to have a little bit larger lot here and a little bit smaller one there to make it work. But you're not adding any impacts to the community. And you're still bound by your development and environmental regulations in place. So we found it to be an excellent tool in other jurisdictions that you're gonna meet your growth targets, uh, better that way by utilizing that land, uh, to the best of its, uh, its use. So we would encourage you to, to further look into what you call clustering, what many other jurisdictions call lot size averaging. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Please give your name for the record.
Patrick Ewing. I also had an opportunity to participate in some of the stakeholders meetings, two of them. And I thought too, that they were frustrating and confusing, but there, I did learn some things. There are, there is a wide diversity of opinions of the property owners who live there. There were some who just wanted to live there, some who wanted to develop one or two houses. And then some who wanted to do a larger development. I also learned that, uh, property owners in, um, zone one were not necessarily hard over on keeping this zoning at 5400D. They seem to be okay with having less zoning density. And without the connector, the connector was, the 39th connector was the primary reason for that high density 5400D or A zoning designation. Which really doesn't make sense without the connector in the plan, because the infrastructure is not there to support it. The roads and the sewers aren't there to support that kind of density. So I was kind of surprised, if I'm reading the staff presentation correctly, that their recommendation is not to change the zoning designations. And I thought that was something, that was something that made sense, because that density really doesn't make sense there anymore. Cause you just, it's more remote again. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? All right, I think we're ready to move into council deliberations and direction. Councilman Rag, or Agnew, sorry, Councilmember McNeil.
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, a speaker made a comment about, uh, it was unfortunate that we weren't able to be at the, uh, the meetings. And that is unfortunate, because we didn't get to hear a, a lot of the discussion that took place in those meetings. But I think one of the things that he said that resonated with me is, I But I think one of the things that he said that resonated with me is, I would love to hear what the developers have to say. Is there a way we can bring them here and hear what they have to say? Maybe I can direct that at staff or somebody to, we can make that happen maybe at an upcoming meeting or something, or?
We obviously can invite them. They also were able to come to the public hearing tonight, and I think they've been able to be in the process, but if you think there's a voice that's not be heard, been heard, we can reach out to them.
I would, I would just love to hear what they, they have to say before, before we make, before I make a final decision or give direction or something. I would love to hear what all the participants have to say, and they're the one that we haven't heard from yet.
Fantastic. No, we have sign-in sheets from all of the three public workshops, and I, I think that we'll extend an invitation to the developers that participated and, and any other developers that they want to bring. Mike, Mike, I'm sure can help us reach the home builder group, that, and oftentimes the home builder developer combination companies are interested in these matters, so I'm sure we can invite them to participate on next week in the public hearing.
Yeah, I think, I think it would be really, really good to hear from master builders, the developers, the entire council gets to hear from them. I think that would be a fantastic opportunity for us.
We'll do that.
One of the other things was, there's a lot of information here, and in our last meeting, we had the spreadsheet that was presented to us, very confusing. I've been in the industry 27 years, and I got to tell you, I'm confused. I, I'm the guy who goes and applies for permits and things like that, but it might just be the way it's being presented, and I think what might help is if we have a comparison of what the 2016 LID is going to be compared to what the overlay is right now, so that we can kind of see what needs to be changed in order for it to be comparable. So for me, I'm looking at four different pathways, and I'm kind of hearing, we don't really need to choose a pathway, but we need to come up with a solution. And I'm still confused how we're going to come up with that solution if we don't truly understand what the difference is going to be from the 2016 overlay to what, what's there now. So I, I would really hope that we can come up with that comparison so that I, we can look at something that's going to show us what that would be. Thank you.
Any further deliberation? Deputy Mayor?
So I'm thoroughly frustrated. I've read all this stuff, and, you know, I'm trying to, to make a decision, and, and I thought this facilitation process was, the whole point was for homeowners and SAVE and developers to get together and talk about what they could find acceptable, and I don't think that happened. And I don't know why that didn't happen. I watched the first meeting, and I thought, oh, okay, it's really base level, you know, information. But everything I've heard since then, everyone seemed frustrated because they didn't actually get an opportunity to talk, which I thought was the entire point. So I don't know how to rectify that at this point, other than to ask people, I'm going to regret this, but email me, because I don't know what anybody wants, and I don't know where you, how we, we find a solution. I'm not going to say that makes everyone happy, because that's probably not possible, but that works. I, I still believe there's, there's a space and a, a solution that makes sense for everyone. Maybe it's not ideal for everyone, but this is, this is just thoroughly frustrating to me.
Do you still, good? There we go. Councilmember Agnew.
Email us all. Give us your information. Give us your ideas. Let us look at what's going on, and let us all try to come up with a, a solution to this problem.
So looking at the, the pathways, one of the questions that was asked to me by one of the owners of one of the properties said, you know, I just want to build, what if I just wanted to build another house right there in their yard? And what are the requirements to do that? And the answer, I mean, I proposed that to the community development director and asked, what would it take for them just to build a house there? And there, there was no clear answer. And that's not a dig, it's just the facts of the code that we have in place. So to me, Pathway 1 is low-hanging fruit, needs to be nailed down, no doubt about it. The difference between Pathways 2, Pathway 4, unless somebody wants that, please let me know, but otherwise, I think that's probably not even worth exploring at this point. But Pathways 2 and 3, what I heard, what I've heard from the communities, they want something that is understandable, that you can figure out what the value of the land is so that people can sell their property and they can have it developed, or they want to sell it to a developer. And I don't see anything wrong with that. I mean, that's part of being a property owner. You should have that right to be able to sell your property and know what you're going to get for it and move along with your life. It's unfortunate in this area, because I do have a lot of sympathy for the property owners that are out there. They're my parents' age. I grew up on five acres as well, and my parents couldn't maintain a five acre parcel like that, and they've just been there waiting for an opportunity to sell their property and, and at least understanding what it's worth. Now, will it be worth what it was, you know, before the Great Recession? I don't know. But, but we need, we owe it to those people to at least be able to understand if they had to sell their property tomorrow and they got to move, you know, out of the country or wherever, at least they could sell it and know they, they got a decent shake on their, on their property sale. There's been some comments tonight about changing the zoning of the R5400A, and that, to me, was one of the main reasons I did not support ordinance 2163s, because we took out the 39th connector, and this has nothing to do with the environmental piece. I mean, there's a, there's a bit of overlap, but it's more so about transportation. Leaving that whole area, R5400 doesn't make sense to me. And maybe, maybe it does from a, I haven't had any transportation studies presented to me that it makes sense to leave it at that density, but from what I understand, the, there was going to be a road that went through there that did provide sewer and transportation and another way for all, this whole area is extremely congested. And when we, when we looked at ordinance 2163, we had a lot of public testimony about transportation, very little about the environment. And so that, to me, needs to be addressed in this whole process, the, the R5400 zoning. Is that enough direction? Okay. And then I think I said this, but just to make sure, I say it again, prescriptive. I, I mean, if you, if somebody wants some demonstrative approach, I think we have the flexibility in the code to do so. But what I've heard from the property owners and from the develop, the few conversations I have had with developers is they don't like that you can't figure out what the code is going to yield.
Yeah. Counsel, we also heard the same thing in our key poll, keypad polling. The prescriptive was more popular than the demonstrative. In the end, they said both, but, but the percentage, by percentage of opinion, the preference was prescriptive.
Good. I think we beat that up pretty well. Is there any other comments? You guys want to go another round? Deputy Mayor?
Sorry, I have a question regarding the clustering. So are we able to do, I know it's on the docket to discuss clustering later in the year, but are we able to do a separate standalone clustering ordinance for this area if it helps? Or do we wait? I, I'm not sure.
Well, right now, there is kind of a form of a clustering provision within the modifications provision of the current LID overlay. So in theory, you could just continue that forward, i.e. within this subarea, where there are some special provisions for clustering. It'd be a little bit in advance of our citywide clustering, but it would give the council the ability to maybe go a little bit further than what may the citywide clustering would be.
It just seems like this is really an ideal opportunity for, for clustering to be part of the solution.
And, and one of the reasons that the 5400A was picked was because it was so flexible, and you could really have a small development footprint in there, and that was why the reason for the reduced lot sizes in the 9600 and the 40,000 area as well. So yeah, you're absolutely correct.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I do like the term lot size averaging better, by the way, than clustering. Okay, that brings us to the end of this agenda item. So this, we are going to have the public hearing extended to June 28, 2016, so there'll be another ample opportunity to, to speak with council. On the record?
If you're done with that, just a quick comment on the emailing of info. I think we're in a public hearing, so I think it'd be better if anyone has any additional information they'd like to submit, if they could submit that through the city clerk or through the community development department directly, and we'll make sure the entire council gets the same information. But we're actually in a formal, not, we're not in a workshop setting. We're out, we're in a hearing, so. I, all for getting additional info if we're missing something, but let's get it through the clerk or community development, and then we'll get it to all the council.
Yep. Good point. Thank you. Appreciate it. So that brings us to the end of this agenda item, and we are going to go to a 15-minute break and be back at 8:15.